... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And Trustee Marisak.
Here. All right, we're all here this evening. Welcome. The first item tonight is the public comment period. This is any member of the public that wishes to speak. All right, hearing none. Move on to item B in the public hearing for 2019 tax levy. I'll open the public hearing, and if there's anybody to speak on that issue, please come to the podium. Everybody knows that there's nobody walking up, but for those on the recording, I have to give them a second first. All right, hearing nobody for the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing on the tax levy, and I will move on to the ME-DC update. Char and Doc.
I think before I start the update, we would like to, well, I kind of would like to just read a few words from this magazine, which basically is all about the CC award, which is something that I'll present before my presentation, if that's okay?
You bet.
I have a take. So this is all about the 2019 CC awards, which is the Community Impact, actually Corporate Investment and Community Impact Award. Businesses shape our communities. They bring in revenue, but they also propel regions of our country forward, impacting residents in countless ways. So much of what happens in a state, in a community, is determined by the businesses that decide to locate and develop here. So that being said, about a year ago, the state of Illinois and local economic development agencies worked together, and this is a national trade magazine, and there were 30 recipients of an award, 15 in two different categories, and Budig was one of those recipients. And basically, the award is in honor of the Carl Budig Project, but it's actually given to the agencies and the village for their work in bringing Budig to Montgomery. So with that, I would like to present the village board with this award. The CC award is presented by Due North Consulting, Inc., publishers of Trade and Industry Development Magazine, to the Village of Montgomery for Outstanding Achievement in Economic Development, Community Impact Division. So Matt, would you like to come up?
Sure.
And maybe we could take a picture, or Doug? I don't know if you would like to as well.
Can I just picture two favorite board members?
Yes. Let the record reflect.
Trustee.
No.
No.
So this sound system sounds really good. Sometimes you go up to it and you're like, everyone should have a copy of the magazine as well. I had provided them to Rich, and I believe they were put in all of your boxes or your village board packet. But it's kind of a big deal, so we can get started now with the update. He said, "Turn it on first." So I kind of just wanted to give a brief overview of the ME-DC. We have two new board members, village trustees, since the last time I came in front of the board. I'm just going to talk very briefly about the history, how we're very different from the traditional corporations or agencies within the Village of Montgomery and other communities, and the benefits of having an ME-DC or an Economic Development Office, as well as some of the things that we do. So we were founded in 2003, primarily with the business community and some of the leaders. I believe some of them are still here. Denny Lee, Pete Wallers is one. Jeff, you were here as well. So the intent was to have a place for businesses to go, and also to have a conduit, if you will, to the village, to let village staff and administration and the trustees know about the things going on in the business community, that sometimes, you know, they don't always come, and, you know, maybe they're afraid of village halls sometimes. You know, it's just, it's just something that was developed, and actually, I think a lot of businesses do appreciate that. Then, of course, we're a liaison between many agencies. I think I forgot to bring my water up here. Sorry about that. So as a liaison, we also work with different agencies, including the counties, the state, the railroad, to name a few. We also do marketing, some for the ME-DC, but primarily, our work is driven towards Montgomery, the village, name recognition, and also the businesses that we serve and the businesses that are in Montgomery. I think some of the differences that people don't always realize is that the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation is very, very specific to Montgomery only. We will only serve the Village of Montgomery, and it will include the businesses, the residents, investors, property owners, and employees. And when I say employees, I don't mean Village of Montgomery employees. I mean all employees for all the companies in Montgomery, because if they're here and they're happy and they're employed, they're going to spend money, and that's what we want. So I often work with different businesses, residents, and so on, as long as the focus is actually to impact the financial position of the village. So I say we're not a fundraising organization, and that was primarily, I believe, driven actually by administration. There was a time we had raffles for iPads, and we actually were told that we want you to help the businesses and do what you do best. So we basically have one fundraiser or event, and it's primarily a, actually a networking event, which is our annual golf outing. This year, we had 108 registered golfers, about 148 people attended, and yes, we did raise some money, but the goal was to get the businesses to learn about Montgomery and meet the people in Montgomery. So the 34 foursomes that were brought by Old Dominion brought in all their clients as well. So that was over 90, 112 people that got to know some people from Montgomery, so. So we provide a resource for business owners and the community at large, and I know sometimes that's hard to understand. Let me just put this down for a second here. But whether you're a startup business or you're looking for employment, we also work with ComEd. We have a lot of different services that we provide to help address the needs of the community and the people in the community. Sometimes people say to me, "Wow, I can't believe that you can help me with this," and basically, I say, "Well, you can thank the village for that, because they want us to be here for you." So I've done that with applications. I've done it with beavers, you name it. We've done it, just to help our businesses feel needed and wanted in the community. Reducing the cost of a full-time economic development department is huge. I know that sometimes during budget year, sometimes, you know, the amount of money that's funded is really just a portion of what other, what most other economic development agencies use or get from a community. Most of them are in the 300,000 to 500,000 range. So that being said, I think you've got a pretty big bang for your buck. I also know that a lot of companies will say they won't even work with a community without a separate economic development agency. And so that's written in many places. That was just a few things that I wanted to mention. Our partnerships with various support organizations, I talked about a few of those. We will often work with developers, trying to find different uses for current buildings that maybe, you know, the use has changed. We've worked, we've worked a lot with the 911 building, which is, I call it the 911. Some people call it the River Building, but we've had everything from flea markets to roofers, just trying to find a way to make better use of the properties that we have. Currently, we have a couple of buildings on Ocot. Actually, one is supposed to close this week, so sometimes I'm not always able to talk about what's going on, but this week there's going to be a closing, and hopefully another one shortly on some of the Ocot properties. I also recently have been talking a lot to Lori and Ron Schelling. They were the ones who had the gas station. We're trying to find a daycare or maybe, you know, arrange some meetings in that neighborhood that could possibly find out from the community what it is that they're looking for, so then we can find either the business or a broker to find those. So we do a lot of marketing. Well, we do as much as we can, from press releases to newsletters, a lot on social media, and we try to repurpose properties, which is one thing that I just mentioned. Nomination and recognition, again, the CC award was huge for the ME-DC, as well as for the, for the Village of Montgomery and Carl Budig. Just recently, at a ME-DC meeting, some of our companies talked about how they purchased additional companies, and Performance, which previously was Fox River, purchased not only EB Brown, but closed on another large purchase, which then made them number two in the food distribution business. So again, back to some of those quotes that I quoted from the magazine, it is important who's here and what they do and what they bring to the community. We do have networking events that we not only attend, but we go to, or we, currently we have a holiday party around the corner. We have about 48 people already who have RSVP'd, so that's great. We want people to work together and get to know the other businesses, and we also want the businesses to know each and every one of you as well. Here, I just, just did a few photos. We've been working pretty closely with Fox Metro. We did some marketing for them. They had four events, which basically was used to help educate the community. There were chores and picnics. The picture in the right-hand corner in the top is the plaque that was then awarded to Carl Budig on behalf of the ME-DC and the village. We did that because we actually, there were four awards that went to the agencies that worked on bringing Carl Budig to Montgomery, so we wanted something to provide to them. I also did a tour where people were, some of the village staff were able to come and see the Budig plant, and that's something that we hope to do a few more of those tours. We can also tour the Fox Metro plant. That's another option, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities. There's also a picture there of the Showcase Montgomery Tour. We actually had 12 new brokers that were from the Chicagoland area. I don't know if you've noticed, but even if you go down Ocot or any other area that there's open space or open buildings, you just don't see one sign anymore. And I, nothing against the signs that were there, but what's important is each one of those brokers can represent different companies, and those companies then learn about Montgomery. So that was a big win, I think, for all of us, and I can't believe how many people didn't know as much about Montgomery as there is to know. So it was, it was kind of an exciting opportunity. And then I just put a picture of the, the new signage that we did for the ME-DC. We actually ended up not even having to pay for the window signs, which was nice, but it's just another way to help the identity of the ME-DC and the downtown. I didn't go in a lot of detail. I didn't talk much about the ICSC, which actually, I go to two events. One is in October and one is in April, and that's where we get an opportunity to talk to retailers about who's out there, who's looking, how many locations are they looking for. There are a few that are looking at the 3034 corridor and also Orchard, but again, until we're able to secure something, there's not a whole lot that you can say. So that being said, I don't know how long I took, but I'm open for any questions and comments.
Awesome.
I have a question. Can you tell us who is closing later this week for Ocot, or is that still privileged information?
Unfortunately, yes, Steve. The, the situation has a tax liability, but an exciting thing is it's coming from another community, but it's complicated. The transaction's a little complicated, so it can't be announced, but it's supposed to close this week.
Will the board know upon closing in weekly updates?
Hmm, I'm not sure.
As soon as they close, you're able to let us know?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
If you can let Jeff know, then he'll...
Yeah, he'll put it in our weekly update, please.
Yeah. I got a call Saturday afternoon, so I was excited. There's a few projects that we're working on, and again, you know, sometimes they can work together. One of the issues, like I was looking for additional parking, but unless I know what's around that's available, it's just something, you know, that, that we do. It's part of what we do, so.
I would just want to say thank you for all that you do do. I have a friend who happened to help Char out, and he came home and told me that she loves what she does, and she truly has a passion for the village and everything related to the village, which was kind of nice, because it was unsolicited. He just came forward and just kind of threw that out there. So it was, it was nice to know that, and your work is appreciated.
Thank you, Ted.
She works really tirelessly with the Wabonzi Community College. I know with some training for some of our local businesses that we don't realize that they're looking for training, and she attends a ton of job fairs. That the number one thing that I hear every ME-DC meeting that all of the businesses are dealing with, and I know in my business we're dealing with it, is labor. It is, with unemployment being as low as it is, labor is the number one problem. So Char works really hard with the community college and the job fairs to try to help put the pieces of the puzzle together, get them in the same room talking. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it shows she's dedicated, because we're in a situation where we know there's no more money to really put into the ME-DC. As far as we're concerned, she can go out and get more people to give more money, but it's also a thing where I think she loves Montgomery over the years and knows she's not going to get a raise or anything like that. It's just the money isn't there. But we're the last of the, we're the last of the economic development places, and by our board, they all seem very happy, even though they're not all from Montgomery, but they have businesses, attachments in Montgomery, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Char.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's three items. I'll read them and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting from November 12th, accounts payable through November 21st, 2019, and the accounts receivable report for October of 2019.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Betsinger.
May I carry six zero? Thank you. Under items for separate action, so this evening, we have ordinance 1869, adopting the tax levy for 2019. This is our first reading. Justin?
Thank you, President Browley. The board had requested staff to take out the allowable tax cap or PTEL percentage. The $2,246,082 represented in your packet represents no increase for existing properties and approximately $12,000 increase representing new properties only. If there's any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Any questions? When you prepare the memo for the second reading, can you put that information in the cover sheet, that it's basically what you just said? Because I don't think that was in the cover sheet this time, just so that it's aware and the record reflects that we did what we did.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Can we put something like that on consent? Is that allowed?
Yes, it is.
Want to do that? Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to actually, yeah, we're not voting on that. So item B, C, and D are intertwined. So we have ordinance 1869, approving a zoning ordinance text amendment regarding cannabis, second reading. Ordinance 1868, amending the municipal code regarding or imposing the municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax, second reading. And then a new item that staff will summarize is ordinance 1874, amending the village code regarding cannabis regulations, and that's first reading of that item. You want to take it? You want to explain that item D to the board?
Okay, sure. So item D is a companion item, but it doesn't matter whether or not the board passes or doesn't pass the approval of regulating the businesses. This is with regard to the criminal component of the cannabis legislation, and what this does is just takes away the references in the village code to match what the state statute says with allowed to what personal possession amounts are allowed. So, and you'll see in my notes, there are certain sections that reference directly to the criminal code, and those actually don't need to be changed, because the criminal code itself changes what those amounts are, but any other place in there where it references possession, we just added language that cites them directly to, you know, not inconsistent with state law.
This is, that's something that we do quite frequently when the state passes something that kind of changes the status quo, so. Maybe it would be easier. On item D, does anybody have any specific questions on that portion, updating our village code? No? If there are no objections, can I place that on consent for a future meeting?
Yes.
All right, that's item D. Okay. So item B and C, we spoke about these. We had a decent conversation. At the last meeting, we tabled that, because there were some changes that we made to the ordinance, kind of at the 11th hour, that we can talk about today, but also, I know Teresa wasn't here, kind of wanted all of us here to have that fun discussion, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With that, if there's any lingering questions that you have or any board members have, we can talk through those at this time.
I do.
Go ahead.
So this is for Attorney Julian. I know that each business would have to go through the process of a special use. So in particular, the opportunity that has been proposed or could potentially be coming to Montgomery, let's say we move forward and that type of business with the growing facility, restaurant, brewery, and serving the infused beverage is in place, is there ever a situation where we can revoke a liquor license once it's in place, aside from the place closing down or whatever?
A liquor or cannabis, or either?
Well, either, I would guess. Either, yeah. Either. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Before I answer your question, I'm going to back up a little bit and update the board in general. Since our last meeting here, the state has actually passed a trailer bill, which has significantly limited where the on-premises consumption can be, and it's specifically meant to limit the restaurant and brewery type establishments. So instead, it wants it to be limited exclusively to the dispensaries and smoke shops. Because this just came out last week, we haven't had a chance to go through and figure out all the nuances yet, so my recommendation to the board at this time would actually be to kind of sit tight with regard to passing anything with the onsite consumption until a little bit more information is learned, just because this is so new with these changes. They're different than, you know, what they were for the last couple of months and what people were anticipating. So to look into that a little bit more, you know, that might change your perspective also as to whether or not, you know, if a brewery and restaurant isn't allowed, whether or not you want the onsite consumption at all or not. So that's just a little update for the board. And then with regard to the licensing, though, once, there's always a process for revoking licenses. It's usually a lot harder once it's been given to take it away, and it usually has to be fairly egregious type violations, but there is, you know, always some sort of recourse. It's just how many hoops, you know, you know, you want to jump through after the fact versus before.
Hey, well, now we think we might not want this.
Yeah, exactly.
We're going, we're going to take away your license. We can't.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, once it's vested.
We'd have to do something pretty significant to say.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a clear violation of something, the same with a liquor license, you know, there's always the process to revoke it, but, you know, not just on happenstance. You know, we changed our minds.
But we do have the authority to update, like, when we updated the sale of liquor, the hours, we could update that portion. I mean, we could update our code, you know, if there's changes that need to be made. I don't think anything would prohibit us from doing that. I wonder how that would look if it was just one cannabis license and we were just regulating that through our ordinance? I don't know if that's allowed?
Well, I think you'd probably have an issue with people being grandfathered in also at some point, having some kind of amortization period, you know, after the fact, because again, if somebody's running a business based off of a change, you can always change your zoning, but usually there are some rights that vest for the people that have taken advantage of that. And I guess, you know, again, we're not sure exactly what this looks like, because this is a completely new type of business. It's not exactly comparable to anything. to anything.
Okay. Did you have more questions, Teresa?
No, not really. I just wanted to make a few comments just for public record. So I've done more reading and more research, you know, more than I probably ever wanted to do about cannabis, you know. It's not my thing. So I've been trying to educate myself as much as possible. And with the, just doing some comparisons, I had mentioned Oregon and California, they were some of the early adopters and some of the concerns that had come up. And I think they didn't have some of the safeguards that are in place with the Illinois law. So I feel a little more comfortable with the idea of the growing facilities and the other types of uses that I was a little hesitant on before. You know, I'm not doing backflips over having this here, but I almost feel like it's it's an uphill battle because it's coming. It's coming our way. So I just wanted to mention that. The phrase that keeps coming in my mind, and I don't know if Doug and Steve will pick up on this, but the "I can live with it," that was something we learned for our newly-elected officials. Mary McKittrick was, sometimes it comes down to, is it something you can live with? And like I said, I think it's coming our way. I don't know. I don't know that there's a way to stop any of this. So anyway, I think there's some locations in town that could potentially be well-suited for growing facilities. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Back to our lawyer. When you said that we should probably stand pat on a lot of this as far as this text or this ordinance, that is B, the back page is the adult use. Are you saying some of these we should just leave out and later bring it back?
So specifically what I'm talking about would be the prohibited use. There was an exception for the restaurant. So.
The last sentence?
Yeah, and it's item three on the last page.
Under 4.171 location?
Does prohibited uses, and then with the exception of a restaurant, onsite consumption would be prohibited. It's the onsite consumption piece that's really the most up in the air right now. So I believe one option tonight would be if you, if the board would like to pass the ordinance without, you know, prohibiting the onsite consumption and then going back and revisiting the onsite consumption once more information is had, or the board, of course, could just wait on the entire thing. But I don't think that the rest of the ordinance would be entirely affected. It's more the onsite consumption and what type of facilities are allowed or not allowed to have that onsite. And that might also affect 4.17, the adult use cannabis. And there's that last sentence that references that 250-foot setback, and the question would be whether or not the board wants to allow other, the non, you know, the remaining uses within the 250 feet of the major highway, or if that was only intended for a restaurant-type establishment, in which case then you might want to strike that as well.
Okay. So she kind of laid out the two options. So when, as I was prepping for this meeting tonight, you know, I was kind of running through the history that we've had on this, you know, and it's in the code here, the resolution here, the ordinance, is the public hearing, and then we had several meetings at the board level. And those meetings, you know, we asked certain questions, and we understood the animal that we were dealing with here. And then at the 11th hour, we got a call from somebody that might be looking to do something infused in town. And I think that's kind of where it got all of us a little bit shaky because it's not something that anybody's well-versed on. And so we really have two options tonight, and I'm actually looking for the board's direction on this is, one, not take any action on either of these, or two, strike the restaurant use, you know, the infusion aspects of this and approve it. And if it's something that we're desirous of doing later, or if somebody applies and can give us detailed information as to what they're doing, we can revisit that then. So I'll leave it up to you guys.
We can modify the ordinance afterwards.
Yep.
I'm ready to modify the ordinance afterwards and begin to proceed because if there's someone who's looking at coming into the village, this shows them that we're, yes, we're passing our ordinances and we're kind of gearing up for this. And hopefully the state can, you know, finalize exactly what they need to do. That way we can finalize our ordinances.
Okay.
I completely agree. Trustee Youngerman.
Can you just clarify for me? So we're striking the onsite consumption for now?
Completely.
That, wait, that it's allowed or it's not allowed?
Not allowed.
Not, so, okay, we're not allowing onsite consumption. All right, I'm good. Let's move on. Thank you. Let's vote tonight, people.
Yeah, I think the cultivation's fine. It's the selling of it, especially reading on, not all the beer is alcohol, a lot of it's non-alcoholic that they sell. Colorado and California is just swarmed with different kinds like this. I mean, when I mention something, if there was going to be one beer like this, there's companies out there or restaurants out in Colorado that have five, six beers, all different flavors with cannabis in them. So a lot of this is coming down to, down the road for us. They've been with it a long time. They've had a lot of somewhat problems at times, so let them make the mistakes before we do.
All right. So if we were to strike something, what would we strike?
Okay, so number three on the bottom, under prohibited uses, the first clause that says with the exception of infused adult beverages served in restaurant establishment would be struck. So it would just be the consumption of all cannabis and cannabis-related. Infused products shall be prohibited within the cannabis businesses, for sure would be struck. And then secondly, is the policy question of that last sentence in 4.17, whether or not the board wants to allow the other uses within the 250-foot of a major roadway.
We would take out the restaurant brewery use there, but are you willing to have a, like a growing facility with that 250-foot setback if it's separated by a major highway? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you would just.
So we would modify, just take out the restaurant brewery use, but we would leave the 250 in there. For other.
Yes, correct.
And all we're doing is waiting for the, to digest what the state just gave us.
Yes.
And then we can talk about this in a week or, excuse me, sometime next month.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, you're just prohibiting the use, the onsite consumption, and then at which point you have more information, you can go back and decide whether or not to allow it and how to allow it.
Once again, I'm not happy with how the state handles this. We knew that this was going to come. There was a money grab. Now all of a sudden, they're, all these municipalities are going through, creating their ordinances. They've spent staff time. They've spent attorney time on this stuff. And then they come through with these changes, and it's like, now we have to change it. Now we have to put the brakes on. Now we have to spend more staff time studying it. We have to spend more attorney time.
I certainly don't, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. And I hope and think that those amendments that they made in the veto session are the only amendments anticipated. It's common when you pass a huge bill to have to do some cleanup. Let's hope that they fixed everything that we're going to.
As far as follow-up, we'll have sort of a couple of different scenarios. If the follow-up bill, the trailer bill prohibits the restaurant use or the brewery use, then we won't need to bring anything back to you. We will just inform you of that. Because if it's prohibited by the state, then there'll be nothing. If there is a way that it's allowed, we can either bring it back to you, you know, as soon as we realize that and revisit it, or we can wait until we actually have somebody come that's interested in that and bring it to you at that point. So those would be your options.
We'll see how it goes. There's a lot that we don't know, so we can't speculate. So somebody may, that entity may still be interested in doing that at the facility or something else, so we'll just have to see how it goes. All right. Anything else that you're dying to talk about?
Are we saving item C then until B comes back, or do you want to act on C?
No, we're going to act on B and C tonight.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Gotcha.
Correct?
Yes.
I guess, I can say that, but unless there's a motion in a second, it doesn't.
Would you like a motion for ordinance 1867? And do we need to do them separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
And could you please specify in the motion with the revisions?
With revision.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
May carry six zero. Item C, ordinance 1868, with no changes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
May carry six zero. Thank you. All right. Item E this evening is waiver of bid and award of contract for traffic signal maintenance. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. The spring of this year, I met with representatives from Meat Electric, who handles our traffic signal maintenance program in regards to the traffic signal at Seasons Ridge Boulevard and Douglas Road. The traffic signal controller and fixtures are, were extremely outdated and in need of being replaced. So at that time, I requested a proposal for the upgrades for that signal with the intent to add those on to the fiscal year '21 budget for that work to take place. Unfortunately, since that time, the controller has failed, and Meat Electric has had to install a temporary controller to operate and keep this signal functioning properly. So at this time, included in your packet as well is a summary from Engineer Waller's outlining the scope of the work for this project and also giving some background information on why that staff feels that it's a good opportunity for the village to move forward with this waiver of bid for Meat Electric to perform the upgrades at the signal for Seasons Ridge Boulevard and Douglas Road for the sum of $34,455. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
I do have one real quick. I see there's an adder for $6,200 for UPS and battery backup. You're not requesting. Can you explain why?
So we are not requesting the battery backup at this time due to the reason that the, that signal we don't feel is as intricate as a signal or as some of the other signals that we have in time. At this time, we're also planning to do some other upgrades at a later point in time, which then that battery backup could be installed at that point in time.
Thank you.
Seeing the memo, it also mentions we have a similar situation at Douglas and Montgomery Road. That one we're waiting on right now since the county shares, you know, two of the legs on that. So we have contacted them to see what kind of cost sharing they would be willing to do.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Is any of this the white light that's activated when, what part of that is that? Is it the flasher?
So that is not included in the scope of this work. So the current controller that's at those, that's at those locations, the controllers are very outdated, so they don't support the preemption lighting for emergency vehicles. But what's great about this, what we're proposing here is the controller that will be replaced, that will be used to be replaced, supports that. Unfortunately, that work can't be performed without full engineering done on that for the contractor to be installed. So again, that's something that we're planning to budget for. Basically, what we're trying to do is get the signal backup functioning at the minimum amount of money that we have to put into it at this point, and then we'll make further recommendations to move forward in fiscal '21 when we can account for that.
Thank you. But you'd be building upon the improvements here.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Since this is a waiver of bid, we do need five affirmative votes for this. So is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak.
All right, and that passed six nothing. Thank you. One item for discussion this evening is liquor license request from May's Lounge. I believe we have a presentation. Hi, how are you?
Good. I also gave a handout to each of the trustee, village trustees of the presentation as well, so you can follow along. Do you have a little?
Shar, do you have the?
It's right up there.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay, so this, you guys asked for a concept drawing of what the lounge will look like with the kitchen and then the counter and then the sink, apartment sink, all up to health code standards. We follow all the guidelines with that, too. Do you guys have any questions? I believe your municipality does allow six gaming terminals, which was allowed by the state as of recently. So that's why six are drawn in. Do you have any questions with the drawings so far?
I don't think so.
The intention is that you're going to serve food.
Yes, I will get to that in a second. Sorry. So I wanted, you guys asked like what type of oven we will be using, and this is our oven. It's a convention high-speed microwave and convention oven. So our dishes are prepackaged items that we heat up and we serve according to our, I guess, concept. So I know we're not like a full-service kitchen that you were asking for, but we do serve Taba-style dishes that are smaller, and we order them through a web store, a restaurant, and everything is pretty tasty. I've tried everything on the menu, actually, so I can't say it's not. I would say it's considered like an eye pick, I would say, the items that we do have. And the price does range. That's on the lower end sometimes, depends on when we get them. And then they are programmable, too, so it's easy for our staff to use them. And so I know you guys didn't believe me that these are our pictures from the last of the book, the concept book that I gave you guys, but these are. And all of our lounges look like this. Our owner does help with the interior design. We have a company, we actually have an interior designer that works with our company, too. So we are a luxury brand, and we try to represent that in the outlook of what we're giving to our clients and any guests that come in. So this, these are the surrounding May's establishments within Montgomery. I gave this, this was from the IGB website, actually. Now, I didn't put all of our locations up here. I only did the surrounding areas that are close to Montgomery to give you a ball point of what we're making and the municipality share on the far right side. So I will tell you that Bartlett is not our most, how should I say that, the best location for us when it comes to making the most income. I would say our other locations are more profitable, but it is still a good location, and the municipality does get a large sum per year. And that's from, it actually is from March 2019. So, because it opened up, I would give you the exact date. The first day it opened was in February 20th, 2019. So that's why it's probably not that high either, but the other two have been open since 2018. So. These are also pulled from IGB website. I know you have a lot of establishments with video gaming already in Montgomery. Grandma's Table is the only concept that's close to ours. So that's why I highlighted it. And you can tell the municipality share, that's kind of high, actually. And that's only from 2019, up until October. I didn't do the full month of November yet because it's not up yet. So, so, oops, where did I go? Okay. Now, this is a comparison chart. So I took the three that I showed you prior of the May's lounges surrounding Montgomery, and I took an average. So that's why I got that $13,000 for the municipality share. I don't, I can't pull up fictitious reports if I don't have the numbers, but that's just an average of what Montgomery could potentially be earning, if not more, because of our brand personally. So. And do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
In reference to the look of the facility, I was in Bloomingdale this evening, and she's not wrong. It is much too. It is much to what the pictures were. I mean, it was very nice marble, very nice. I was very disappointed, because I went in actually to get something to eat before I came here, and they don't serve food.
That's...
They had the oven, but she had no food to make, so that was a little concerning for me. But, again, the facility was pristine, it looked fantastic. The lady that I spoke with was super-nice and knew a lot about it, and kind of taught me a little bit about the game portion of it, because I'm not that familiar with those. So, it was a nice facility, though.
Awesome. Any other comments, questions?
Would the intention be to serve food at this location as well?
Yes, all of our locations do have food, and I honestly don't know what happened with that. I know we, which location did you go to, Bartlett?
Bloomingdale.
Bloomingdale?
Well, which is, I believe, it says Bloomingdale.
Glendale Heights.
It says Bloomingdale, but the license and everything says Glendale Heights.
It's Glendale Heights, okay. So, I'm not sure what happened there, I apologize, but yes, we do serve food. Normally, our senior hosts train all staff members, and they know how to work the Mary Chef oven, so, and we're trying to find better procedures about maybe implementing any guest that comes in, offering them a comforting beverage, any snack items, and then offer them the menu, too. We're still not there yet, but that is our goal, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And so, to kind of go back to the last meeting, the, the request before us is for a different type of license, it's not the restaurant license, it is the...
Class F beer and wine license.
And we currently have zero of those, right? Does anybody have one of those?
I didn't bring with me, I felt like we had one out there, but I...
I can stump you, because I don't know either, so.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head. Okay. So, at this point, thank you. Is there any, if there's no other questions from the board, I think we should opine either way as to what, whether we need, and the three options that we usually have are, we're not interested, or proceed, or we need more information. And so, what's the pleasure of the board?
I think the facility, it's beautiful. The interior, it looks absolutely beautiful. But I just, I'm not in favor of having something that is just really geared toward gaming. I mean, we do have a lot of gaming in town, and, you know, once we give those liquor licenses, it's out of our hands. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you came in, and you're like, and I'm referencing to the last meeting, I watched the video of it, that, you know, this, this is what we do, you know, it's a nice lounge area in the front, and like I said, it looks beautiful. And then you have the gaming area, and it's geared toward gaming, and our board has mentioned several times that we're really not interested in having something that is like a gaming hall, or what, casino, whatever you call it, a little casino, so I appreciate that you're back here again, but I'm not in favor of this.
So, the, the one thing that I will say, and I, I have had those feelings for quite some time, we've tried very hard to ensure that we have family-friendly restaurants in town, and for all of our efforts, we still ended up with almost all of our facilities and gas stations that were large enough to end up with gaming terminals in there. And so, that, in my opinion, is less desirable with my kids, I'm not going to bring my kids. The difference that I see in this location, which is why I would change my tune on this, is it's a '21 and over place, it's a place that I'm not going to go with my kids, because I can't. So, it literally isn't going to, in my opinion, detract from a family atmosphere, because that's not what it's geared towards. So, I appreciate you being upfront with the concept that this is what it is, you've proven that it's a higher, you know, a higher end, and it's on a side of town, frankly, that has a ton of traffic, and I think it would, I think, I don't think it would detract from our community, and I think it's something that I'd be supportive of.
Yeah, I, I would much rather see this facility, or similar facilities, than the gaming stations and the gas stations, and the other places where it just simply is awkward. I mean, this, this is a facility for, for gaming. We've got almost 70 of these machines in town that we're perfectly comfortable with, but having a, a small storefront that's designed just for this, I, I guess, I, I don't understand the apprehension, this seems to be a no-brainer to me. It's a business that wants to come to the community, clearly has a decent reputation, has, it is exactly what it says it is. I don't get the, I don't get the hangup.
As I look at this list, you know, I'm, quick math, $25 million in the amount played, and, you know, I've been to all of these places. Grandma's Table, yeah, it's a little weird. Orchard Stop, yeah, it's a little weird when you go in there and you see these. But, this isn't trying to be hidden, I mean, this is exactly, they're, they're telling you exactly what it is.
I will put, say this, after going to Bloomingdale, the signage is exactly what we're seeing there, and there's not a bunch of flags out in front that say slots, there's not a neon sign in the window that says slots, it seems to be a different level. And I have to say, I was a hard no going into this, and I went there tonight, fully anticipating to confirm my thoughts, and I was not. I was wrong, because it really, it's a nice place, you know, and I asked, I said, you know, I've never seen anybody in one of these. I go to Speedway all the time, I have never seen anybody sitting on one of those machines. So, where these numbers come from is beyond me, and she mentioned that there was three people there an hour before I was there, and on a Friday or Saturday night, it's busy. I've yet to ever see anybody at any of them, at, whether it be Rosati's, I think I saw somebody once over at VFW playing, so I don't get the allure to it, but it's obviously a business that works, it's a model that works for someone, and again, other than the food thing, and maybe her oven wasn't preheated, maybe she just didn't have stock, but the fact that you're calling it what it is, you're not, we've had other people come in here and try to smoke and mirrors us and tell us it's going to be something else, you're calling it what it is, it's going to be a little casino. And the fact that it's, it represents exactly what it is, and it doesn't have all of the neon signage and the flags hanging out in front, I actually respect that, so, you know, I'm actually in favor of it.
Full, full disclosure, Trustee Marisack and I were talking on the phone about this at 5:30 this evening, kind of, he, because I never got a chance to go up there, but I did a lot of Facebook checking, I did Google, I did all sorts of stuff. And he called me and said, hey, Steve, I'm headed to here. I said, snap some pictures, send them to me, and then call me as soon as you leave, and he did, and we talked about it, and it's, and I'm, I am shocked by the numbers on this sheet, that Grandma's Table is at 3.73 million, Orchard Stop's almost 8 million. Wow.
Where's the people with the $8 million? And why aren't they buying more pizzas in town?
Yeah, that's it, they're all businesses, though, where their customers play it, and that's why you don't see it a lot of time, they come in for gas, and throw some money in there, and they leave, and it's customers. I have questions for you, then, you just, or her, too. How old is that business in Bloomingdale or wherever?
July.
July.
I was still...
Yeah, June.
June or July.
Technically, yeah, when we opened.
Was there signs that said 21 anywhere?
On the door.
It's on the door.
On the door only?
It says plus 21 on the door, and then even when you're at the host stand, there is a "we" card sign, so, yeah, it, it's clearly stated at our location.
Your advantage is you can put them where you want to, where these people are putting them in gas stations, that they're required to have them so many feet from the door and all this, so they look like they're shoved in areas, and they are, they're shoved in areas where they're low-selling retail items, and that's why it doesn't look real good, but the money is there for people to gamble, and I don't know if, but I'm glad you, Lee, submit that it's a casino, because your headlines in the paper, I think, was Hickory Hills voted best casino in the north, so, where before you came in, it was more of a lounge, and, and I can't understand if the girl's been there six months, why she couldn't make food. I got a, you know, I got a feeling that maybe ours, in six months, somebody's going to walk into and say, can I have a, no, we don't do food, or, you know, we're not ready for food right now.
And like I said, I walked in specifically to buy food, and perhaps I, you know, let's face it, tall, dark, and chunky, and she was going to have to preheat an oven, and then cook food, and maybe that was why, but she, I mean, she was on, they had quesadillas, empanadas, I believe, it had the full menu you had, she didn't have several of those items, but again, it could just be a timing thing for me. And this location that I went to is very much similar to what we're talking about, it's a strip, it's a, it's a strip mall, it's right next to, I think there's a Home Depot down the way, and some other businesses, but it's a strip mall storefront facility, so, very similar to what I anticipate ours would be here.
So, awesome.
Just, just for clarification purposes, you're not tall.
You know you got a good woman, he has to close the door upstairs, because he's laughing. So, where do you sit, Steve?
I'm a, I'm a yes.
Okay. Denny?
I voted for the other two or three that came here, no, and I, I'd stick with it. It'd be different if we let them in, but we told them no, and now we're letting somebody in, so to me, we're changing, which is fine.
Well, she's also requesting a different liquor license.
Changing on the board.
She's not saying she's a restaurant, anyway.
Yeah.
But...
But she is for, for wine and beer, is that correct?
Yep. Dan?
So, last meeting, I was a hard no. I've, I've done some research also, and the facilities look nice, and they've got some pretty good reviews. This was difficult for me, because I agree, I mean, it's, it's just a gambling establishment that's going to serve liquor, there's, the, the food is just incidental, it doesn't matter if they're serving it or not, I don't think that's the reason people go there. If somebody's waiting for a machine or something, they may say, jeez, I have something I can get to eat while I'm waiting for, you know, my lucky machine. So, I'm kind of on the fence right now about it. You know, like I said, last meeting, I was a hard no, I'm a little bit more open to it, but, and as far as the playtimes, too, I, I looked online, and, you know, you can look at different establishments, and not just May's, but other lounges in the area, and it seems like the, the busy times are eight to midnight, because you see that there's hardly any activity in them.
I have to say, we have an hourly guest count at all of our locations, and it actually depends, not all of our locations are busy at night, it depends on the, the municipality, I would say, Lake Zurich, there's people in the morning, they show up, they're lined out the door, so it really just depends, it's not always a late-night thing. We do keep an accurate guest count of every day, and with all of our locations, so it really is just, I would say, it varies.
Okay. And regardless, the hours of operation would mimic the liquor license hours?
Yes.
Or could they vary and just not serve? I don't know how that works.
No, we follow the liquor laws, and then, I know that you guys, I have to look it up, but I know we would be open at 10:00 AM, and we would close at midnight, so, what would then, the liquor license rules?
Okay. So, Dan, do you require any additional information, or are you just on the fence?
Yeah, I don't know what other additional information I could, I could ask for, this is just one of those personal things.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, we've always, you know, and I've lived in the village for 35 years, so I, I have history, and I, I know the history we've had with just bar establishments in the village, and why we went to the, the food component. I, I don't think that's going to be an issue at this facility, but then again, you know, we've shied away from these type of facilities in the past, but it's a different liquor license.
But, but has the village shied away? We have 70 machines in town.
Right, I get it.
So, I, I think there's an incongruency there, saying...
They didn't vote on any of those, I mean, they came in because the state allows them, and the state will allow these, too, I can see that, but it's, we didn't have a choice on where they went.
Right, but we did have a choice on whether or not to allow it in town, which we did.
Yeah, liquor.
No, to allow gaming.
Gaming.
We can allow it, community-wide, or ban it, and we voted to allow it, at the request of the VFW.
Yeah.
So, just, to me, it's something we allow.
So, I'm going to put Dan in the definite maybe category.
This seems like the kind of a use we would...
Dan is a hard maybe.
Your comment that we're perfectly fine with it, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that I'm perfectly fine with it, but again, it's out of our hands once we do the liquor license.
Sure.
Right. Thank you, I don't mean to cut anybody off. By my count, we have, it's five to two that we would like to proceed, it's an informal vote, really, but at this point, if you would like to work with staff in our police department on liquor license requests, then we can move forward that way.
Perfect, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, guys. All right, anything new or unfinished? I noticed you're just wearing just regular, boring clothing today, Denny. Okay, go ahead.
Director Wolf, thank you so much for the change of the light fixture on the street. Ooh, spotlight on the front of my house, I don't have to turn on the front lights ever, ever again, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the extra leaf pickup, as well.
All of the leaves are still on my tree.
That's because you have a pear tree in your front yard.
Yes, every year.
Pear trees hold their leaves, so.
That's all right, I raked all mine into my parkway, and walked out an hour later, and watched my neighbor fill his fifth bag, and I said, hey, they're coming to pick them up, and he goes, I didn't know that, and I'm thinking, but didn't you see the big pile? So, he said, well, it's too late now, I'm not going to take them out of the bags.
Wednesday, they're calling for a 60 mile an hour dust, so it's going to be a game-changer all the way around.
You know, we always encourage people to put them in the bags, it's a, it's a more secure way of knowing that your leaves are going to go with your garbage pickup. Again, you've seen, this year alone, just we get weather that impacts sometimes our pickup, whether it's rain, snow, wind, like Trustee Guyer's talking about, so, again, it, it can at times seem foolish to put them in bags, but there is that security and that factor of knowing that it's going to be gone on your normal garbage day. The other impact that we see a lot with leaf collection is parked cars, something that we can't control and you can't control. Many a times, it's, it's a neighbor or, or someone else that parks in front of your home and blocks your leaf pile, and enables public works from being able to pick it up. So, again, there, there are advantages to, to putting them in the bags, as well as using the service, so, which I think is fantastic that the village provides both.
If you have that car problem at my house, feel free to just drive up on the sidewalk.
Cool. All right, I'll cut you guys off there. Our next board meeting is December 9th at 7:00 PM in this room. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you.